Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. Cherry, would you do the roll call, please?
Mayor Nicholson.
Here.
Mayor Nicholas Sayer. Durst.
Here.
Beth Melza.
Here.
Martinez.
Here.
Smith. Wells.
Here.
Okay. We have a quorum. We'll move on down to the public hearing of the ordinance amending Rawlins Municipal Code, Chapter 15 dot 24, building codes. Is there anybody from the public that wants to speak on that? Go ahead and come on up, please, and state your name and sign the piece of paper.
I'd like to use the board here to discuss a couple of things instead of talking about your fire department. After getting that started, I'd like to talk a little bit about your responsibility of snowboarding.
Okay. We can talk about that in the citizen's participation.
I don't, didn't bring an actual broken down bid with me, but I've heard some pretty low numbers on the cost. What cost? That's going to be the cost of building a fire system for your, I don't know if everybody can see that, about $12, $800 to have a contractor come in and plumber kind of, the contractor spend it, but it did take about a week on the strike, and that's an average $2,000 worth of house. We then have human safety issues, if that's what the fire department will want to issue. I'd like to know as far as 10 years of houses that were built properly, built houses that are built with proper windows, proper heating systems, and everything according to our codes, we already have how many people have been injured in a house, not a old home, which doesn't even follow the code system, the whole infrastructure in just the housing. Then I'd like you to examine the freeze of the system. We all know what happens when you're plumbing, freezing, it breaks. What happens when electricity goes out, which we've seen more and more times, electricity's going down, it's aging, it's getting older, and they're not maintaining it. We can see what goes on in California right now because they have a system they cannot keep up with. The federal government came in and built most systems, they're not doing that anymore. Everything's getting older, and we're relying on what we think is good, and it's not necessarily good. So we have to look at a total house being destroyed when it freezes. You've lost it, so now you can add that to that cost. And then you have the cost of maintenance. It's going to have to come in every year and inspect. We can do inspecting, the fire department, maybe the process is more to go in there. I'm opposed to it because some people will say it's international codes and this and that. I've been down Peru, I've worked there, we don't have any problems down in Peru. And you know why we don't have problems in Peru, with paper or not? We build with concrete. Everything's built out of concrete. They have a product out now that's called Aircrete. It's an insulated, air-treated, cement, and it's totally insulated, it's totally fireproof, it won't rot, bugs don't get to it, you don't have to paint, you don't have to do anything to it. So why don't we just mandate everybody build a concrete bunker? Because why? Because when you go into a car lot, you have the choice of what car you want to buy and what options you want in. Everybody in this town has that option. You have a fire sprinkler, put it in their house if they want one. It should not be mandated. I know as a builder, I won't build in Rawlins when you do it. And I'm just now finally gearing up after my last house that I built in this town when they didn't pay me, I'm finally getting the legs back under my feet to actually go back into building, and it won't be in Rawlins when you pass that code.
Thank you, Casey. Is there anybody else who would like to speak in regards to that?
There you go.
Okay. I do have some questions and concerns. I 100% understand the reasoning behind wanting this code to be in effect, to save lives and save homes. I understand that, and I'm not debating that. I respect the fire department, everybody who wants this to happen, but I do have some concerns as somebody who was in maintenance and somebody who moved here with the intent to build someday. We have actually had two homes burned down in the past 10 years, and thankfully, we had no injuries, and I still have these concerns because of maintenance. I am hearing quotes about $1.30 per square foot, stuff like this, but I just, it's hard for me to believe, to be honest with you. What is going to happen 10 years, 20 years' time? I mean, you have to continuously maintain these systems. And what if you, what if you skip a year and you don't get inspected, or you don't get maintained? Is the insurance company still going to cover you? I mean, these are questions and concerns that I would like answered. Another big concern for me is finding the people to do this. I have been here for four years, and it is difficult for me to find anybody to show up to give me a quote on anything, anybody to show up to fix anything for me. So now, we're just adding a whole nother expense to these homes that we have to maintain and that we have to control as a homeowner. So, once again, I'm not against it, I understand the reasoning behind it, but I do have some strong concerns about the longevity of these systems. So, I guess this is answers that, answers that haven't been answered for me yet. So that's why I'm here, and I just ask that you take that into consideration when making your motion.
All right. Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on that subject? Come on up.
I'd like to say thank you to Aaron Durst and Jacqueline Wells for opposing this, and I hope that you will oppose it until the very bitter end. And my concern is, I've been in a lot of other countries, I was in Peru for 20 years, and the International Building Code is what we adopted, I think, about a year or two years ago. We had the Uniform Building Code. It was a beautiful building code because we were still an American country. We had our constitution, we had our state constitutions, and we leaned on each other, depended on each other to get everything done. We didn't have everything in a alphabetical, one, two, three, we can push these folks in, we can push these folks out, we can get this done and that way and everything else, okay? That's what made America great, that's why we came over here to do what we're doing. Now, those that, I know a region was speaking to a builder here, I can guarantee you that when the International Building Code was first brought into effect, we were promised all these kinds of things. Now you can barely squeeze or do anything without having everybody checking a block here. And it's only as good as the people that are checking the block and observing it and/or enforcing that. And, you know, our city does a great job when it can, if it can, and when it does. Now, property rights are very, very important, and I'm sure each one of you have some sort of property. Your kids are going to have them, your grandkids are going to have them. But I'm here to tell you, they're not. International Building Codes, the International, there's another one coming out, it's a property maintenance code. Pardon me? Yes, sir. Exactly. And for those that can hear me, I would highly encourage you to see what that's all about. Your property rights are nonexistent, as I remember it and as my constitution says it. We just said the pledge of allegiance to that flag there. Behind that stands that constitution. I would beg you to look at that. Uniformity is good, but we're still in America. We're not in a communist country, we're not in a socialist company, country. If we show our eyes to it and we vote it, this right now, in my own opinion, is treason or sedition. I hope that you will take that into serious consideration. Thank you very much for your time. And again, Jacqueline Wells, Aaron Durst, thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this?
Wes Trapp, speaking on behalf of Carbon County Fire Department for support of the sprinkler So, for those of you that don't know me, my name is Wes Trapp. I'm the current fire chief for Carbon County Fire Department here in Rawlins. I've been currently volunteering with that organization for 15 years. Carbon County Fire Department is 100% volunteer organization. I'm here tonight to show my support for the residential sprinkler systems and new constructions of the homes. I strongly feel that the information, the data, and the demonstration that Chief Rutherford and the City Fire Department has provided, excuse me, cannot be ignored or denied. I've seen firsthand unnecessary property destruction and loss of life in relation to structural fires in residential homes that very easily could have had a very different, more positive outcome had there been a sprinkler system to aid and suppression, slow or stop fire growth, giving occupants time to escape the building unarmed. In addition to occupants' lives, we're making it safer for the first responders to these structural fires by slowing or stopping fire growth before the first truck even arrives. In a world of lightweight construction and home furnishings that are more susceptible to fire, responders are at a higher risk more than ever with elevated temperatures and structural collapse happening sooner while attempting to rescue occupants from inside a home. In short, the council's support for this ordinance just isn't for the person down the street. It's for your friend, your neighbor, your loved one. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Wes. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this? Yes, sir? Or Kami?
My name is Casey Wells, I'd just like to add that there's some things said in that last statement, I would sure like to see the documentation to back up the statement.
Okay. Kami, would you like to come up?
I'm the mayor, I'm city council, my name is Kami Hortenson, and I was asked to come and provide insurance, or information as far as homeowners insurance companies go, just to give you information to... One, one item is that, yes, and I'm only speaking as it relates to Mountain West Farm Bureau Insurance, I don't know about other companies. We're the largest domestic company in the state of Wyoming, our home office is alone. I wanted to just let you know that if, if an individual has a smoke alarm, they have a automatic sprinkler system installed in their home, our company does recognize that and provides a discount for that. However, they also do that for any home alert system that you have, whether it be smoke alarm, deadbolt, a direct line to the fire department, if you have Vivint Security, anything like that. So they have different tiers of discounts that they would allow. Just to give you an idea on that, if, if a person, and to be honest, in my, my time here, we haven't had a home in Rawlins that we have added that discount to. In order to qualify for the discount, it has to be new construction, and it would need to be 100% in the home, meaning the living room, the attic, the kitchen, the closets, everywhere, not just three on one level. Every, every area needs to be covered. It gives you up to 10% discount. So if you've got a $200,000, $300,000 home, and you're looking at an annual premium of $1,300 a year, that discount would give you 130 off of your premium. Now, you as the homeowner are, also have some responsibility in that because the insurance company is lowering the premium somewhat. You're responsible to maintain that system. When you apply for the discount, the company requires that you provide documentation of the type of system that was installed and the service slash maintenance agreement that goes with that. And you as the homeowner are responsible for that. So if by chance a situation came up, you installed it in your home, and it said in your documentation that every five years it needed to be inspected or charged, or whatever it might be, and you had a loss after that, but you didn't, you failed to do the inspection, the insurance may not pay that claim, just like anything else. If you, if you were negligent on your part, they may not pay the claim. In a situation, one other question I was asked by an individual to provide clarification for is if, if a person had the sprinkler system installed in their home, and whether it was installed improperly, or there was a leak, something that couldn't be taken into consideration or prevented. For years down the road, some fitting pops, and they have water damage in their ceiling. That would be something that, that the insurance company would cover, now subject to their deductibles, so it's, it's not a free ride. They give you a little discount on your premium, but a loss is still a loss. I, I had someone ask me, they had a question and were informed that if you had insurance and you had the sprinkler system installed in your home, and it would malfunction, or you had a water loss due to that, that the only way that you would have premiums paid, or not premiums, but coverage paid, would be if you carried flood insurance. As far as Mountain West Farm Bureau is insured, that is concerned, that is incorrect. That would not be anything that we would look at. On, on the fire alert system side, depending on the degree, you could have a discount on your policy just for having a smoke alarm and fire extinguisher in your home of 2%, depending on how involved that is, it could go up to 15%. So there is a, a small discount to the homeowner to encourage preventative maintenance. As far as if it's the right thing to do or the wrong thing to do, it's out there, other places have done it. I'm not saying that's the right place Rawls is or is not, but I'm just here to provide information or answer any questions that maybe I can provide some clarity to. Thank you.
Thank you, Kami.
So I actually spoke to my insurance company today, and I asked them what would happen if there was a leak or, you know, water damage from a malfunction. They did tell me, yes, she said that they would cover the water damage, but they actually will not cover the system. So if something happens with the system, insurance isn't going to cover that. So my question is, who does cover that? Is it the people who install it, and for how long? I mean, these are questions that I want to know. I'm a little nervous. Another important thing for me is human error. I've been into many homes where these so-called professionals have installed things, and I have found that they were not installed properly. So, you know, we can say that everything will be great, and we'll get them installed, and everything's going to work perfectly, but there is no guarantee to that, Russell Fenton. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
How are you tonight?
Hi.
Hello. My name's Stephanie Lane, and I want to introduce myself to you specifically as your new economic development director. I'm sorry that I haven't met you yet. I actually had hoped to come in January and put together a strategic plan and bring it to the council. I don't have that done yet, though. So, but I thought I really wanted to come and add some color and some background from a professional perspective on, on this topic. An ordinance such as this definitely has a pretty drastic economic development component, and I thought maybe I could put some, shed some light on that. So there's no question, some of your previous speakers have mentioned that there, there's no question that these systems work, right? They, they can save the house, and they can stop fires from spreading. I don't think anyone is questioning that, or the safety of our first responders or our citizens. And in fact, I commend the fire department, I do, for pushing this, because I think that's, I'm really glad to live in a city, I just moved here 90 days ago, where you're that concerned about my safety, so thank you. But you might not thank me after this, because I would have to say that my, my professional advice right now would be to put pause on this. Because these types of ordinances actually have real cascading effects throughout your housing market that can be very, very real, and have actually been real for other municipalities. And I think the blanket adoption is probably the thing that we really need to rethink here. So the standard that they've put in front of us is a gold standard, bar none, right? The thing is, it's not intended to be a one-size-fits-all kind of, of standard. It's meant to be something that you've got to make work within the environment of your municipality. And so I think we would have to look pretty closely at all the pieces of this standard to make sure that they weren't going to be detrimental to Rawlins before implementing it. One of the things that happens, obviously, and this is, and I'm just going to reiterate a little bit of this here, but this is, this is all quite true here, it's above and beyond the initial cost. How much the initial cost is varies by geography, and in here, it's not likely to be less than average, is it? Because everything has to be transported in. National average costs also, obviously, usually assume that you have the technicians, the supplies, and the materials locally necessary to install and maintain such a system, and I doubt that Rawlins has that right now. So these costs are going to be quite substantial for new homeowners. And in the same way that all new cars, you could argue, should be fitted with speed cameras and lane assist, right? Like my daughter-in-law drove down to me in one of those, thank God, because she's a terrible driver. She's terrible. She's terrible, she's going to kill my grandkids. But she bought a CRV that has this really great equipment. I do wish all of my grandchildren were in a car like that, but I know that they're not, because I have another daughter who couldn't possibly afford a car like that, even a used car like that. And that's kind of what we're going to do to our housing market here. It's very real. The other thing that it also, that you have to think about, is it's going to affect the number of units that you have available as housing stock at all. In Rawlins, right now, the Great Divide Study just came out, this is that commission study that you probably know better than me, that's done every 10 years for Sweetwater and Carbon County. It was done just this summer, and it shows two things, one, that our population has gone down by 983 residents in the last eight years, and that the housing stock in Rawlins, 43% of it is over 50 years old. So we have a lot of housing stock here that's going to age out. It's aging out. You guys live in it, you know more than I do. So this ordinance, what happens when you open up a house for remodel? So not only are you beginning to slow down your new construction and add cost to it, but you're also adding cost and slowing down your remodels, and that is very detrimental to a house, to a city that has a housing stock as old as ours does.
Can I interrupt for a minute?
Yes.
Just to clarify, if this went into effect, it would not affect remodel? Strictly would be on new construction?
New construction. So there would be no, sorry, mate. I literally just got back here, like, two hours ago from Tampa, Florida, and I'm not really acclimated yet. So what would happen, though, if somebody came in and wanted to do that job on an existing structure that was going to require, like, all-new plumbing or something? I mean, is there...
It wouldn't be required in that.
At all?
At all.
Okay.
With this current, what's being talked about now, it would not be there.
Well, that, that would, that would be important, but that's, that's a really important delineation too, because I know that in Florida, for example, with flood, right, flood insurance in Florida, if you remodel a house, 50%, 50% of the square footage. So if you're going to do something that is 50% or greater, then it triggers all the new codes. And that's the way that they try to get houses not to flood out, frankly. But so if such a similar thing was happening in this, this code too, if we blanket adopt this code and that's in there, then we're also going to start really affecting our ability to, to provide housing for our residents. The other thing that I, I want to talk about too, and this is a little bit of a Debbie Downer, and I'm sorry for citizens who haven't met me, I moved here voluntarily, and I really do like the place and have family in the area, but Rawlins, as you guys know, is facing some serious economic headwinds. I mean, decline in population, and decline in tax base, and a decline in amenities. So we, we've got to get this little bit of a spiral that has happened due to the decline in our population stopped or slowed. And I think that that's where we should really be focusing our efforts right now. It'd be nice to have lane assist and cameras, it would. But right now, I think it's important that we all have cars. So I think we should start there. And I think that there are other things that you could do, because I do think that it's important to keep our first responders safe and keep our citizens safe, but I think you could perhaps consider something with a carrot, a tax abatement, for example, for citizens to encourage them to install it. If you have lower taxes on a house that has such a nice amenity to it, you could make those houses more desirable, they would sell more often, people would build more houses and put sprinkler systems voluntarily into other ones because there was a benefit to do that. So that's one way from an economic development standpoint, that you can begin to incent this behavior without as drastically changing your housing market. And the last thing I would like to say is that there are other technologies out there too that should probably be explored before we make a decision that's going to affect our housing and our citizens, and our ability to continue to attract new citizens, which we need to do, right? There's new technology... Um, there's new technology out there that can be installed by an average homeowner. These exist in other countries and are in wide use and they're powder-based systems. I'm not a fire person, so I don't pretend to be, I'm not an engineer, but I get to say that in meetings a lot too. But there definitely are other things I think should at least be discussed and feasibility analyzed before we do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on that?
Mayor, uh, council members, uh, my name is James Johnson. I'm actually here in support of this. I'm part of Rawlins, volunteer side of the fire department. Um, born and raised here, I'm raising my kids here. Um, something like this to me, it drives home the fact that I know that my kids are safe, whether I'm at work or if I'm at a call. If they're safe, I'm happy. It's in a new house and I'm going there on a fire call, we've got a member that's in here right now that's put out of her house because of this. New construction, they burn fast, they burn hot. You guys saw the side-by-side demonstration. You know, you talked about maintenance costs. Everybody in here, it's a homeowner, has maintenance costs. Fridge goes out, dishwasher goes out. Those are costs. Everything needs maintained, right? You buy a car, it needs maintained. It's not like it's just going to sit there and fix itself. It's not going to sit there for 20 years and never get used. Hopefully that's the case. But this is a system that's in here to protect the family members in the home, protect the people that coming in if something happens. That's why we're here. That's why we need the support to push this through. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to come up and speak on behalf of this?
Uh, my name's Jared James. Uh, no offense to you guys, but I want to speak a little bit to the dramatics. It's, uh, not saving lives, it's about money. Um, it's not talking about saving our friends and our family. How many new homes are being built? There's none. Nobody lives in a new home that has to have this. If they want to put in their homes to save their families, they can do that. They can pay for it. You shouldn't tell people they have to be safe. That's about it.
Is there anybody else in the room? Okay, Scott?
I guess just for the argument sake, I know it's difficult with my position at the city, but I'd like to try to be recognized as Scott Hannan, a citizen. Maybe not necessarily the city manager, I know that's difficult. Or retired fire chief or anything else, title that I've held in my life. We, we all talk about government shouldn't tell us what to do to be safe. Government shouldn't run our lives, it's not a free country. Yeah, it's not a free country. We all have rules we got to abide by. There's a whole pile of rules. Spent two hours downstairs tonight talking about rules. The, the life that we live in, and I'm pretty glad that we have some rules to keep us safe. And, and I guess I'd ask anybody in this room, do you wear your seatbelt?
No.
Hey, that's your personal choice, right?
All the losses I have can abide me if I don't.
Okay, but why?
Why?
Yeah.
My insurance company can save money.
I'm not talking with you, Casey, I'm talking with this group, so I'll talk to you in the hall. The reason why, despite popular belief on that, is we got tired of killing people in cars. And the public said, we need people to be safer. And so they, they made cars safer. They put nater bolts on car doors because people were flying out of cars. We got airbags, we got side air curtain bags, we got everything imaginable to keep a car safer. Why? Because the citizens wanted to be safer for their loved ones.
Why are you drawing a line?
Let's allow Scott to talk, please. My point is that public has demanded a safer way to live. And we, and despite popular belief, we try to learn from our mistakes. And may have mentioned last council meeting about Lady of Angels Schoolhouse that caught on fire in 1958, I believe it was, December 1st. Why was that a significant time in history? Because up until that time, we didn't have sprinklers in schoolhouses. And we killed a bunch of children in a school. And the public said, enough's enough. Why are we killing kids in schools? Why are we killing kids in cars? We need a safer way to keep infants. Everybody has car seats. Yeah, sure, you're going to get fined, but the reason why is because we've, statistics have shown that the survival rate of people in car seats, especially infants, is dramatic. Same wearing your seatbelt, same reason we have airbags in cars is the public's demanded a safer way to not kill their children. One tenant that we're usually left with in life is to leave this place better than we found it, make it better for our children. And that's what this is about. You're going to build a new house and, and the main point is, Chief Rutherford's hit this point all along. The code was designed to allow lightweight construction and open floor plans with sprinkler systems installed in them. Period. That's not debatable. It's, it's proven that that lightweight construction, the reason that these wonderful homes that we can build now with the technology that we have, was dependent on the sprinklers being in there to allow them not to burn. Ask the people that lost their home, almost lost their children in a brand-new home that was built to code, that was inspected and they felt safe in, and a simple light bulb fell out of the ceiling, caught a couch on fire in June, and they're still out of their house. That's what this is about. It's about doing the right thing. It's about drawing a line in the sand, saying, do we want to make our community safer someday? Sure we do. I hope we do. I hope this is a safer place for our children long after we're all gone. That's what this is about. It's about saving the lives. It's about doing the right thing. It's no different than when you go down and buy a new car. It's the latest greatest, greatest safety innovations. Why? Because we learned how many people we kill every year in vehicle crashes. And Casey, if you want to know the answer to how many people die in fires every year, Google it on NFPA. It'll tell you how many thousands of people are injured in old construction home fires and new, and new. And how many people are dying in new construction fires? So those facts are available. I'll have them next time if we're still talking about this next time. That is what we're talking about here. And I'm sorry, Chief Rutherford has provided you more information and he'll continue to provide you more information on the cost deviations we saw in the Front Range Colorado. I'm going to disagree with economic development on that way. You build better quality houses, you build things that people are going to stay in last, you build a place that people want to come and stay. Obviously, the Front Range is booming and, and going like crazy and they're putting them in there. So economic development isn't a concern there when you're talking $5,000 on a $200,000 house. There's people that have refrigerators that cost more than what we're talking about to, to protect your house. So it really frustrates me when we want to border these lines and say it's about money. No, bottom line, it's about saving people's lives. Anybody that's walked into a house fire and seen everybody that's lost everything they had, despite losing a human life in a fire or a car wreck, I'm glad cars are built safer now because my granddaughter rides in a car. And I've cut a lot of people out of cars in 30 years on the highway and I'm glad these cars are built safer today. I'm glad my grandkids are riding in safer cars and are going to be around. And accidents that were killing people before, people are walking away from them. And that's because people had the courage to say, we want to have a safer place to live. And that's what I'm challenging you folks to do. Make this a safer place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
My name's Austin Hoffman, uh, volunteer fireman for eight years. Uh, to add to what Scott had said about the NFPA, uh, as of October 2019, uh, the report is for 2018, there was 3,655 civilian fire fatalities in 2018. To me, uh, it's the safety of the guys in the back room. We have to respond to calls like through getting called out right now on this program medical, but, uh, we go in to save lives. Your, your fire departments, they don't go in and save lives, they protect structures. They have high fatality rates. So you go in to save lives, you go in to, uh, get that kid that couldn't get over the window, uh, window well or, or out the window, out the door. Um, I, I, my, my wife has a disability, she has mobility issues, so for her, yeah, out of one of these structures, newer construction, it would be very difficult because it doesn't give her the time that a older construction or, uh, a true lumber or, uh, that true wood would give her. And luckily, I, I do live in a newer construction house. Uh, it was built in 2007. Um, it's just done from the, the new elementary school. Um, and when I started hearing about this, uh, you know, the fire rate and, and how the, the laminate, uh, ivans in the floors fail faster, um, actually, when the girl's base, I have two-by-twos that support my house and that makes me feel better because I know it will give her the time she needs to get out of the house if I'm not home. So, uh, I support this. I think it's a, you know, no-brainer. Just need to do it.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Have you enlisted a contractor to put one in your house?
I have not, no.
Then why not?
Honestly, I just have.
No, I just have a great deal. I understand why you haven't already done it if it's such a concern.
Well, to be honest with you, I, I can't, financially, I'm worried none of the fire department people do.
Can we, um, can we stop having talk out there? We'd talk up here if you want to come back up after Austin's done?
Apologies. I was asking a question. No, I, I, to, to kind of answer that, I, I just, I have other priorities in my life and it's to, to make sure my house is available for my son, put on the table, do so forth. If I had extra money, I'd, I'd toss it in there and put one in. It's a no-brainer. Okay? It's quick to use.
I think the proper question is, if you were to build a, buy a new house today, would you put it in?
Would I?
If you were building a new house?
Because you're afforded to buy it.
You could on a new construction. Retrofitting old houses is cost prohibitive. That's why we're not talking about retrofitting current houses. We're talking about building a brand-new house as a cost alternative and it is cheap. We're not talking about retrofitting an old house.
And Scott had hit on this, when the code does say it's for the open house with the light construction. And the, the ability for, to have that construction and that open floor plan, you need to have that, that safety factor. If you don't have that safety factor in there, then you're defeating the purpose of, it's not worth it. You're risking too much life. And then people, is it really worth it?
What's the value of life? I'm sure a southern vineyard house, they can ask their contractor to put one in.
I, I believe the, the figures they got from Westminster, was it? Uh, $1.60, $1.75, and they'll come up and install. That's, that's the cost. And, I mean, I, to me, that's not very much.
I, I have, I have, my friend owns Shopko over here and we went in and had to take the sprinkler system apart.
Can we go ahead and, if Austin's done, then you can go ahead and come back up, Casey, if you'd like.
Yeah, when we, when we talk about maintenance on those, um, Shopko, we, I went in there because, uh, Charlie was spending $12,000 a year was what the heating was going to cost him. Because the building's not being used, we can go ahead and take the sprinkler system apart. And, uh, for him to put that back in order will probably run about $30,000 unless he leases or sells it to somebody else. But in that, uh, doing that, taking that entire sprinkler system apart, which is a dirty nasty job, I found at least 15% of those heads would never have worked because they've been in too long. So what a person might be relying on may not even work. And I realize, and I, and I realize the concern of public safety. Mine isn't against sprinkler systems or against the fire department. Mine is against mandating. And Scott is an excellent speaker. I mean, I got to give him an A for speaking. He's a great speaker. You know, like all good speakers, we got the little propaganda into what we say. But that, it should be the choice of the people buying it. I don't wear my seatbelt all the time. I'm glad the company has it in the car if I want to use it. But I don't believe the government should be telling me that I have to, to save the insurance company money. And when we really take true statistics, just as many people get killed by that seatbelt as live life, but we don't count those numbers, so they don't fit on the, on the scale. I don't believe that we should mandate laws telling you on those issues. I believe that anybody can put it in. It's not we're forbidding anybody to do it, and I applaud them if they do. If you want to buy a new house, then you can do it. My, my niece just bought a brand-new $1.6 million house in Seattle because that's the cost of them. They bought the last house, how the contractor did, paid $500 for the house to tear it down. They got a great housing market. They just, 1.6 million, yeah, no problem. They have it in their house. They got the money, they can have it there. Colorado, those people are buying those houses in the country are millionaires. They're not working people. They're not working in a, in a market where you got one house that was built in 1935 that has no safety issues in it and you want me to build a brand-new one to that. If a person wants it, great, we'll work up the price, we'll put it in for them. You want to retrofit it, great. Do I think that we should pass a law that says we, that it has to be done? No. We could pass a lot of laws that change the entire building structures of everything. We could put in steel supports that don't burn. The 5/8 drywall doesn't burn. You know, they got OSB rated at a one-hour burn, which I don't believe at all. So mandate it for new construction, open this, open that, and this council goes and the next one says, well, we need to, we need to add that to remodel. We need to add that to the garage. We need to add that to, I've seen it my whole life. That's, we got a whole book of add-ons. Every year, there's a new, new rule added to the whole thing. So I'm with the economic person. I think if you're standing in the neutral position, you should take a, a step back and take a more serious look at it. And don't take the, uh, necessarily everything that's, for professionals tell you as the absolute truth. And I, and I believe that they, they believe in what they're doing and I, and I applaud them for that. But I don't believe we should pass this law. You know, I like every one of them, but I still don't agree with them.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak up?
Mayor, do I need to sign again?
No.
I sit in the back and I, and I listen to the conversations about money and monetary expense and what's it going to cost the homeowner. I think of this as full coverage insurance for your vehicle. We all cut a check every month, every six months for an associated cost for owning the vehicle. You know, yeah, it upsets me every month I have to write a check for $350, but you know something? I ain't complaining when my truck gets backed into at the grocery store or anything like that because I challenge anybody in here. There isn't a single person in this room that has the money to bring back a loved one after the fact. Seven grand's going to look pretty cheap when you're burying a loved one. Straight up, flat out, plain and simple.
Is there anyone else that would like to come up and speak? All right, thank you. We will now move on down to citizens' participation and this will give everybody five minutes to speak about something that is not on the agenda tonight. Please come up and state your name and sign the paper. I'm not sure I know who you are, Don.
I'm Quinn. Sorry I came in in a firestorm. I've got something really simple to talk about, but I've been putting this off for several times to come in here. First of all, your landfill. I think that the landfill is probably the most difficult position in public works to fill. And I think you really need to think about who you put in as your replacement or whatever you're going to do for your landfill. And I think the landfill could actually make money if you had somebody in there that could think outside the box. I've talked to two city council people about, uh, having your city engineer run the fire, run, run the landfill and be a city engineer together. Two times the, the people said, well, we've got a contract city, or a contract engineer and now that person's part-time. I think you should think about when you hire an engineer firm to do things. First of all, when you hire a city, an engineer from a firm, that person's first obligation is to see that the company they're working for is making money, not the city, but the, but their, but their, their owner is, is making money. The second thing, when you hire a contract person, their other concern is if we make a decision, is that going to get a suit? Whereas it's, and I think the counselor here will tell, tell you, explain to you too, it's much more difficult to lit, to completely, uh, have a successful litigation, maybe not to sue, but to have a to have a successful litigation against a municipality than it is a company. I think you should really think about hiring a city engineer rather than having it done, and I think you should think about having a city, an engineer running that landfill out there. The next thing I want to talk about is your recycle center. I understand the recycle center's losing money hand over fist right now because of the tariffs. If that's the case, I think you really need to explain to the public why we're losing so much money on recycling, and is it the war our president has made on different places that's caused this, and if that's the case, I think the public really needs to know this. The next thing is the city has decided, we're going to try to go things with a smaller economy to scale, and I've got a paintbrush here, if you start to paint a house with a paintbrush, it's the cheapest thing to buy, but it's pretty expensive to completely paint it with a paintbrush. If you want to paint it faster, you can paint it with a roller, if you want to paint it a lot faster, you paint it with a paint gun, that adds cost to it, but you need to think about the economy to scale doing it. If you're gonna fight a fire, the cheapest way to fight a fire is a bucket. But all these fire departments, when they went from bucket brigades to trying to learn how to fight fires, they went to their other municipalities and said, what have you got for a fire department, how are you doing it? I think we need to do the same thing with the recycle center. We've got, I think, eight compactors down there in the recycle center right now, which are very labor-intensive. I think you really need to go to some other communities and look at those communities, and see what they have done with recycling. Two of them, you really have their act together, is Jackson, and Jackson really sees recycling in a religious perspective, as a lot of people do. Sheridan has a great recycling center, and when I was visiting with them, they said, it's too expensive to have these little compactors to do, that's why we've got a bigger facility. And I hope today that you could get a SLIB loan to do something different than you are with that recycling center there right now. The other thing I want to say is, with all the snow we've had, I think the city really needs to be commended, there's a lot of people bitching about the streets, but Rollins is one of the only cities in Wyoming that completely cleans their streets out. Now, I know you don't get to everything, and I do some things that doesn't please me either, but I think you guys need to be commended, and I think the city council's done a good job, and there's too many people came in here and complained, not tonight's stuff, but just folks that are angry about nothing, came in here and complained, and I think you guys have done a pretty good job.
Thank you, Don.
Honorable mayor, worthy council. Thanks for a few minutes, I want to just visit a little bit about something that is very important to my family and to myself, so eighteen years ago, we started this journey, we had no idea what it was going to be, and that journey, of course, one of our things that we do is our Thanksgiving dinner, and that journey has lasted many moons, it didn't start out at that. In nineteen seventy-three, when my parents opened that restaurant, they made it very, very important that nobody left there hungry, nobody was left out. And so, when we began, we wanted to make sure that the cold, and the hungry, and the homeless, and those that are hurting and suffering, and those that are alone, had somewhere to go, somewhere safe. And that journey now has turned into something a little bit different, we love those people, and we pray for them daily, but now, it's something that involves the whole community, and we are in a position that we feel so blessed and honored that we can do this for the community and for our families, and tonight is not about, though, to bring light on what we do, it was, I came here to thank some people. So if I tell you that we cooked forty-seven turkeys on Wednesday and Thursday, that would be exactly correct. We fed over a thousand people, but what was remarkable is not what my family did, was what this community did to support that. All the people in this community that believe in us, and continue to pray for us, and be there for us, and help us, so we can bring works to other people, is, it's humbling, it truly is. And on Thanksgiving, when everybody started showing up to help, you never know who's gonna come, but they always do, and doctors, and police officers, and surgeons, and nurses, and secretaries, and the average, everybody, we have young kids that are there, we have so many people that are there helping, and there's always a place for them, and on this particular day, besides local police officers, and some EMTs, and the classic flight crew, we had Councilman Durst, and Councilman Steve Sanger, and Building Inspector Lou Liscano, spent their day with us, and helped feed so many people, over five hundred to-go orders delivered to the people in Rollins, not because they were hungry, but because they believed in us, and they trusted in us, and we got to cook some really good stuff. So, over the years, we've had so many different people, and so tonight is to thank all those people that I couldn't even remember today, but tonight to thank these people in a public forum to tell them thank you, and thanks for believing in us, and thanks from my family to all of you, so, I bless you.
All right, is there anybody else that'd like to come up and speak?
Well, the real reason, my name's Casey Wells again. The real reason I came to this meeting tonight, well, was because somebody called me up and told me there was a meeting tonight, because usually by this time, I'm already, I'm getting up at six in the morning, I'm already pretty tired, and I don't like coming down here to the council meeting. Too many times, I feel like it's talking to a rock out in the desert. I truly believe that on the snow removal, we can do a much more, and a fantastic job. I do not believe that snow's been being removed very well in the last five years. If you look back thirty years ago, when we had smaller equipment, less people, you had a much better job, people had pride in it. One of the problems may be caused from a few of the employees I've talked to, is the micromanagement that goes on, so they only go out and do a particular area that they're told to do, that's all they work on, they work on it until they're told to do differently. I also believe that changing some of our equipment out, and getting different kinds of equipment, can do a lot better, and I believe in the workforce, I think they would go out there and do it if they were unleashed and allowed to go out and do it. I live up in a narrow area, and it's very difficult to get any of that serious equipment up there, but, you know, years ago, they did it, they would run a truck up, they'd through that street, and they'd move on, move on, move on, and they'd get them all done. The state gets a snowstorm, they don't stop because it's a weekend, they don't stop because it's night, they don't work five days a week, eight hours a day only, they don't go out a highway out here at night, at midnight, you redo the man-hours, redo the system, you can move three times as much material in the same amount of man-hour, same amount of fuel, as they're burning up now, doing it in the middle of the day. It's not being run properly, and I would really ask you guys to have your city manager, who's supposed to be in control of that, take a serious look at it. The other thing was the dump, I don't know about the landfill running the hole, but I know that we're definitely not running that dump right, we're spending a couple hundred thousand a year more than we have to. You need to put a bulkhead in there, so you can back up and dump that stuff into the trailer, quit using the front-end loader, turn the building up, quit using an excavator to load it in that you're paying money for, back up to it, drop it in, yeah, your bulkhead's gonna cost you some amount of money, but when this first fiasco started out there, it would have already been paying for itself. There's a lot better ways to run it. You don't have to have people back up to the construction pile, you can actually put it in a dumpster and move it out for yourself, it'd be more effective than trying to keep and run all them hoes and stuff around. It really needs to be looked at, and the whole thing can be operated better and more efficiently. So, altogether, we're dropping hundreds of thousands of dollars, just throw it up in the wind and watch it go, because that's what's being done, that's why the real reason I came in here, because after a while, I just can't handle it, my blood pressure, just thinking about it gets too high until I let it out, so I'm letting it out, thank you.
Thank you, Casey.
What do you mean?
Hello, Tanya.
Hello. I just wanted to again thank the police for the interviews they did with the press, and with the radio station, I especially appreciated Officer Franks and his interview with Cali and Bigfoot Radio. I do agree with him that I feel that it should have went to trial, it should have been an innocent or guilty verdict. Disappointed in the fact that it was simply declared not to go to trial because of money, and I realize we can't do anything to change the past, but I would truly hope that the council would view this as something to learn from, and when you make decisions, do not make decisions based on money alone. You should make decisions based on morals and ethics, is it morally and ethically right? That should be the most important factor in whatever decision you vote yes or no on. The other thing is pet partners. I do think, and hope, that in 2020, the council will look at Title VI and the running of our animal shelter. Title VI still has it as a kill shelter, I realize it has not been, mainly in part because of the work of pet partners, that they have worked themselves bone-dry, and they need help, and as a city, it's our responsibility to take care of those pets, and control and manage that. I do not want all the feral cats killed, because I hate rats, so, I'd much rather have a cat than a rat, and I think if we work with pet partners, they would definitely be willing to do the trap and release to help us with that, so we keep the rat population down, but I think that the animal shelter also needs to do its part, and step up to the plate, and start applying for grants, that would allow them to pay, instead of pet partners paying eleven thousand to get these animals spayed and neutered, they could do it through grants. Or perhaps, another option would be for the city to hire a full-time vet to oversee and run the animal shelter, that would give the police department another police officer, and that vet could do all the spay and neuter. It may save us thirty-two thousand dollars, what pet partners has put out there for that to be done, but I do hope in 2020 that you can look at that and make some changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come up?
The council? I don't have to sign that again, do I?
No.
Okay. Another reason I came tonight was our landfill situation up there. I guess I'm old-school, have parents from the thirties and all this, you know, should try to save everything, and I've noticed that down in the landfill, and I'm not sure where this authority comes from, or how this authority's made, or decision's made to do this, but at one time, you could take electrical items, TVs, I think still you can do computers, and it's all free, but now, what used to be recycled, and there's a gentleman here, but he's no longer here, now this same equipment is now going into the landfill, okay? I had a concern about it, I'm just one guy here, and sometimes, maybe I think, maybe I'm a cop, peeing in the, anyway, but the thing is, is I hate to see a dollar get wasted, and I've seen some product out here, just a few while back, and I guess the main thing I'd like to have is, we have ten, close to ten thousand residents here, we have a diverse amount of people with diverse expertise in different areas, not everybody goes out to the landfill, as some of the folks here in town know that I'm kind of outspoken, I come over here and I talk to you, and they come up to me, and I've had them come up to you, you know what, Rick, why did we do this, why do we have to pay this, and why are we throwing away good stuff and nobody does this? I know there's a program, and it escapes my mind right now, but in the military, we have what was called DRMO, disposal reorganization organization, and what that was, was if my company or my battalion had a few trucks, jeeps, or whatever, that were getting old, couldn't fix, or whatever, we put it in like a little centralized area, and I know municipalities have the same thing, but the thing that bothers me is, what are we training our employees to look at something? And what dollar value, I mean, do we throw a ten-dollar bill away, do we throw a hundred-dollar bill away, do we throw a thousand-dollar bill away, before somebody says, eh, let's stop that, let's look at this, okay? We have all these cracks and stuff in our streets out here, we had, oh my God, just conservatively speaking, let's say five thousand dollars' worth of this rod out here, that could have filled up probably, I'm gonna be very generous and say, at least a third of our streets out here, and saved ourselves bukoo amounts of money, if we would have utilized that. But I should be able to come to the clerk, or that person, and say, this thing here will save us thousands of dollars, not hundreds of thousands of dollars, to repair this, without a bunch of red tape, or who's gotta do it, but I know that's how the policy is here within our city, and I'm sure it has a reason, but there should be like a neutral spot to where we can put this stuff at, so a decision can be made, and we don't have people wondering why we said one thing, not give an explanation for it, you know, like the gentleman earlier, talk to us, talk to us. I'm sure there's a hundred of us out here that's willing to give us, give you our expertise, give you our knowledge as to what needs to be done. Let us help, let us be a participant in this money-saving item, okay? It doesn't have to be one way with the government telling us how we gotta do it, and how we have to get it done. You know, please tell me, what is a reasonable amount of time for responses, okay? In three weeks, two weeks, two days, twenty-four hours, what is it? You know, I mean, do we allow five thousand dollars, twenty thousand dollars, forty thousand dollars to go down the tube? Yes, I love listening to my neighbors, everybody here is my neighbor, from here to the north, to the south, to the east, to the west, in this whole United States, trust us, we know what we're doing sometimes, we know what we can do, you know? Let us help you to put this money someplace, instead of having to raise our taxes for it, maybe one of our experts out here that's been doing it all their lives, or most of their lives, can come up and say, hey, let's do this, you know? Sometimes, these occupations or businesses aren't exactly the most pleasurable, or most notable, that somebody else wouldn't want to do, but, you know, vacuum cleaners have copper in it, and I guarantee you, there's folks out there that's gonna, willing to take that copper, I remember when I was growing up, I used to have to take stators apart, alternators apart, go down and get, well, back in the old days, you had brass and copper, you know, let's put that aside there someplace, and maybe have an auction for it, I mean, there's plenty of room out there for that, but it broke my heart to see at least twenty thousand dollars of something that would have saved this city, oh, man.
You're up on your five minutes.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Anybody else like to come up and speak?
Council? Name's Todd, tell them, I just want to touch on the fact about the fire sprinklers. I just wanna touch on the fact about the fire sprinklers. I, you know, I appreciate their concerns and everything, but if they're worried about saving lives, there's another factor in this town with all the campers parked on the streets. You get emergency vehicles in there. Get one emergency vehicle in there, narrow streets, that's it. They got one vehicle in there. I guess, I'm a little confused on what, what's gotta be done and what can't be done. So that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to come up and speak? All right. Appreciate everybody and giving us their thoughts tonight. We will move on down to the approval of the minutes of the November nineteenth, two thousand nineteen regular meeting. Councilwoman Wells?
I make a motion to approve the city council regular meeting minutes on November nineteenth, two thousand nineteen as presented.
I'll shake a bat. I think we have a first and a second. Does anybody have any questions or comments in regards to that approval? If not, Sherry, would you open online voting, please?
Online voting is closed and the motion carries. And Councilmember Espinoza abstained.
Okay. Now move on down to item five, state of Wyoming adoption of the twenty twenty NFPA seventy. Danielle's gonna fill us in on that.
Honorable mayor and city council, um, I wanted to give you guys an update because there's not actually going to be a change to our ordinance. Um, but the state of Wyoming contacted our building official and let them know, let him know that the state will be adopting the twenty twenty NFP, the National Electric Code. It'll be effective January first of twenty twenty. Um, so we would have to follow suit and, I lost my page here, sorry, and do the same thing. However, the last time we adopted our codes, we specifically put in there that, um, we would adopt it as the state adopted it. So again, there's no change, but I wanted you guys to be aware that that would be coming. So any permits applied for on January first of twenty twenty will fall under that new code. Um, I did send our wording to the state of Wyoming, they've approved it. Um, so there's nothing else that we have to do. If you guys have questions, let me know.
Is there any changes in that that we need to let the citizens or contractors know about?
The contractors will get notified because they're licensed through the state of Wyoming. So they'll send out what the changes are. If you've seen the N E C book, it's very large, but usually on the new additions, all the highlighted additions have a little black mark in the sideline, but they usually, because the state's licensing those folks, they send out, uh, the requirements and what sections are.
Okay.
And I did verify that with the state as well. They actually had already sent that notice out. They said that any electrical contractor should already have that.
Okay.
There's nothing in the ordinance that we have to, you could change.
No, so the way our ordinance reads right now, and I did put a copy of that for you, it just says, um, "The National Electric Code NFPA seventy as published by the National Fire Protection, the latest edition as adopted by the state of Wyoming." So as the state of Wyoming updates, we automatically would follow suit.
Just mimic whatever that says.
Correct, yes, because we have to be.
At least there.
Correct, we can be more restrictive, but not less.
Will the general contractor get a notice or just electricians?
Just the electricians are notified.
Okay. Any questions for Danielle? All right, thank you, Danielle.
Thank you, guys.
Now move on down to the approval of tonight's agenda. Councilman Martinez?
Mr. Mayor, if there's no corrections or additions, I make a motion that we approve the, uh, December third, two thousand nineteen agenda.
Okay. Okay. We have a first and a second. Any questions and comments in regards to that approval? Sherry, would you open online voting, please?
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with five minutes.
All right, thank you, Sherry. Now move on down to item seven, unfinished business. Item A, ordinance, second reading, amending Rollins Municipal Code, Chapter fifteen dot twenty-four, building codes.
Hold on, we're here. Where you have the, you need kind of way that would have attached them to the board dock.
He's just handing that out. Can we get a, a motion here to move forward? Councilman Martinez?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I make a motion that, um, we pass on second reading, amending the Rollins Municipal Code, Chapter fifteen twenty-four for the purpose of discussion.
Okay. Hey, we have a first and a second. Okay.
I, uh, I'll get a couple of more copies of that for you. Honorable mayor, council, in obviously appearing before you on a second reading for a very hot topic, to say the least. There's a lot of views when you start mandating codes. And the state of Wyoming just, oh, basically told the city of Rollins that they were gonna adopt National Electric Code seventy. If you really wanna look at some, some large costs, look at the residential code. Electrical portion of the residential code mandates arc fault breakers. It mandates GFCI receptacles. It doesn't give you the option anymore. It doesn't say you have to have those within six feet of a water source. If an electrician goes to your home, an existing home, and replaces that receptacle by code, he has to replace that with a GFCI receptacle and an arc bolt. If you really wanna look at, at, at the laws and how we're loo- losing our freedom, I agree. You know, I've made choices in my life that, that have cost me dearly and some of those you're very well aware of. That was principle. So I fight for principle as well. Um, I don't take that very lightly. But I'm here for you today to answer some of the questions that came up on the last meeting. Councilman Martinez said he was surprised to see this on the agenda again. And the reason that it was on the agenda again was because Councilman Durst said, "This, we can revisit this if you answer some of the questions that have come up." And we can, we can revisit it. So that, so basically left the door open and thank you for that. And, and I feel that I have answered the questions that have come up. Councilman Durst had also, um, come up with an alternative suppression system. So, and, and our new economic development coordinator brought that up as well. So we did our due diligence and we purchased a couple of these. I gotta tell you a little funny story that the finance director saw the requisition that said Fireball on it. He reached out to me and said, "Are we buying liquor?" He was very relieved when I said, "No."
Good test, Dustin.
Yeah. Okay, so we ordered two of these devices. Um, and we're gonna test them, so I gotta say. So here's what we came up with already. Product is manufactured in India. I'd like to draw your attention to the wording on the box. Please, please read it and pass it around. This is not only poor grammar, it's borderline illiterate. You wanna trust your health and safety to a company that is manufactured in a foreign country that doesn't even take the time to accurately reflect how the product is used? I won't. The product is not UL listed. It's never been tested in the United States by underwriters' laboratories. As far as I'm concerned, that product doesn't exist in the United States. It is not included in any single code mandated, mandated by the state of Wyoming or adopted by this body. The product is aggressive. I've watched videos on the product. It's so aggressive that it has a third, a hundred and thirty-eight decibel alarm with it. I think that's just a byproduct of the, the pressure that's inside that vessel when it finally lets go when it's heated. But to put a hundred and thirty-eight decibels in perspective, gunshot is about a hundred and thirty, thirty-three decibels.
Just, the, and just because I only just read a quick thing off of it as well, right? The point of that is just to alert other people that this thing has gone off.
Absolutely.
That's the point of the loud is, is just to notify that it.
If you're in that room with it, um, I, I'm afraid that you're gonna be deaf. You're most likely gonna have vision impairment because of the dry chemical. And, and it may not put the fire out because of the rating that's, that's on it. So a hundred and forty decibels is the threshold human ears for pain. That thing's gonna hurt nor'ears when it goes off. It disperses the dry chemical very aggressively. Worst part of it is the fire rating on it is a one A, five B C. So I'll put that in perspective for you. A five-pound fire extinguisher has twice the ability to extinguish fire than that does. We did the math. For twenty-five-hundred square foot home, it would take a hundred and fifty-five of these placed throughout the home to be effective. A hundred and fifty-five of them. They're designed to be mounted to the wall. They're designed to be over fuel packages. And I can't think of a more fun point for a kid, but what's inside of it is dry chemical extinguishing agents. The material data sheets tell you, you don't wanna breathe that. Well, anybody that's used a dry chemical fire extinguisher knows that. I'm sure that through training with your job, you know. So the last part of this is probably the worst part. The shelf life is five years. So every five years, you're gonna have to replace in a twenty-five-hundred foot square fo- home, a hundred and fifty-five of these. So the cost for that is gonna be about forty-six hundred and twenty-five dollars. You could install a fire sprinkling system or a little bit more than that. Okay, so the next question that came up was the cost of sprinklers. The cost of sprinklers specifically in the front range area. And, and it can be very expensive. The letters that I've given you kinda explain why some of that cost is there, but in essence, a lot of these homes that are being built in the front range are very large, very expensive homes, cathedral ceilings, but they don't have municipal water sources. So they have to have a tank, they have to have a fire pump, but they're mandated. These are being mandated in areas that were affected by wildfires. And the authorities have in the jurisdiction passed laws to make sure that this didn't happen again. Fire sprinkling systems was one of them. So I have three sources of comparison for you. Email document to you showing Westminster, Colorado area. The average cost per square foot was a dollar seventy-five per square foot. These are actual homes that were construction, that were constructed, were built and sold. Next one was a letter dated November first, two thousand nineteen from Life Safety Solutions stating a dollar thirty-one per square foot for installation in Sheridan. And he wrote a letter and signed it, saying that that's what he does. He also commanded you for even visiting this, this topic because obviously it's a hot topic in other areas as well. I have another letter dated December first, two thousand nineteen from Wyoming Fire Protection Incorporated, voting a hundred, or a dollar fifty-five per square foot in Rollins and surrounding area. He'll come to Rollins and he'll install it. And, and just to remind everybody, this is new installation. Retrofitting an old house is gonna be expensive. I know that. Anything that's finished is gonna be expensive because now we have demolition, we have the installation, and then we have to finish it again. This has nothing to do with this existing building. And yes, retrofitting an, an existing building, it would be expensive. And these are residential standard, not commercial standard. I passed out the letter that was written by Sam Archuleta. And, and I was, I was pretty happy that this happened at this time because Sam's building a house. So our discussions ringing to focus to the residential sprinkler systems spurred Sam to look into it. He's considering installing a system in his house. And part of that is because of Michelle Horn's testimony here. Because he heard about what happened to Michelle's family, he doesn't want that to happen to his.
Honorable mayor and council, I've, I've had the luxury of being on the Carbon County Fire Department with Chief Trout. I'm also the, a volunteer battalion chief for the volunteers for the city of Rollins. There was some question brought up as far as, um, additions on existing homes. Section R three thirteen point two in the residential code, i- it's in black and white. In an exception, an automatic residential fire sprinkler system shall not be requ- be required for additions or alterations to existing buildings. Now, in, in the code, we have an existing building code. And if we take the building behind us, a few years back, they wanted to remodel that one. State was brought in, it's a commercial building, they have to follow the same rules. So sprinkler system, fire-rated doors, um, so this isn't, this isn't some, some that happened a year ago. Sprinkler systems have been around for a long time. At the Rollins Fire Department and the Carbon County Fire Department, we train to do better at our job, suppression, whether it's fire extrication, we do it. And the chiefs are always looking for better tools to accomplish our tasks. Mission of the Rollins Fire Department to protect lives, property and environment within our community. Essentially, that's what we're doing. And when we're summoned for service, all available resources, and it's been a rule of thumb now, when we have structured fires, first thing that goes out, we get our page and it gets page next for the resources. So that gives us more, uh, fighting power for whatever situation we're up against. We do this to ensure professional, rapid, safe response to the citizens we serve. In our city limits, it's our responsibility as the city of Rollins, um, Carbon County, if we get called out to help the county, there's a mutual aid agreement that we follow and we go. So like I said, there was questions raised if I'm remodeling my house. And it, it's, it's in the code. R three thirteen point two says, "Don't have a sprinkler system." Whether it's fifty percent, sixty percent, it don't make a difference. If they didn't have one when they started, they don't need one. So all new construction, I think, I think that's where the misconception is, is I've got this house, take mine, for example, down the street. I don't need to sprinkler that, but I've asked chief what he thought it would cost to sprinkle that. So I'm, I'm looking at that option because quite frankly, we're gonna be getting out of here when the weather turns cold and go someplace warm when I get old enough to do that. So that's gonna be our home. So that's going to be our home. There again, as Chief Trapp said earlier, you can't put a dollar amount on a life. And I said this at the last meeting. Carnes' residents, if we had had to go in there and pick up one of the kids, you're starting. So we have it, the tools are in place. I think it'd be a smart decision to reconsider this because you've had the side-by-side runs. I think everybody here is seeing the difference between the two. So if that's not an eye-opener, then, you know, what next? Like I say, we train twice a month to make us better at our job. But if we can add these to new construction, God forbid that something happened again like it did to the new construction of the council. Thank you.
I have a quick question, probably for you. So the state adopts the code and then they pull this segment out and allow everybody to individually adopt it. Why did they do that? I mean, if the code's built around that notion, then what, why are they picking and choosing?
For the same reasons, the exact same reasons that these discussions are happening here. The Contractors Association is a very strong association and they believed at that time that it was going to kill their business. There's still opposition to it. Cheyenne's had the topic. But it's starting to be less opposition from the contractors because the contractors are starting to realize that, hey, this is an opportunity. Now, I might be able to put a business together and install these residential sprinkler systems. They're not complex. They're actually pretty easy to install. But that was the deal. It was a big change and the Contractors Associations didn't like it. So the state of Wyoming said, okay municipalities, it's up to you if you want to pick and choose. I think it was a poor decision. I think that if you want to adapt or change any code, you should have the ability to make it more stringent, but not less. Because the code is put together as a package. It's not put together to be piecemealed. Make it more stringent, don't make it less. But that's, in essence, that was it. It was the Contractor Associations that put so much pressure on the state that they weren't willing to adopt it in its entirety.
I think one of the other side benefits that's come out with the Contractors Association starting to see the benefit of residential sprinklers is when they're coming into a new community and looking at a housing development, that under the current rules, if these homes aren't sprinkled, they have to put in more infrastructure, which means they have to put in more water pipe in the ground and put more fire hydrants in closer spacing to protect these homes. One of the caveats that comes out of this at the building code that the contractors are finally starting to educate themselves on, if I'm a housing developer and I want to come in and put a large subdivision in somewhere, it's actually cheaper for me because I don't have to put in as many hydrants. I don't have to expend that cost. Putting a hydrant in is about five grand a piece. That's about what we spend replacing one. That's not putting in the new pipe, putting all the stuff associated with it. So if a new subdivision's required to have sprinklers, some of the other codes relax and save money to the developer and the builder. And I would argue that it would save cost of the home because they're not spending that money on the subdivision development, put in this other infrastructure, therefore the cost of the house is not going to be as much either. So I think the contractors are starting to figure this out that, hey, this isn't a bad deal because while we may have to pay somebody to put a sprinkler system in a house, I can lessen my requirements out here in the subdivision at the same time. So that's why you're not seeing so much opposition anymore from them. And like I said, go down to the front range and see the explosion down there in homes that are having residential sprinklers put in.
I can give you some examples. Homes with crawl spaces. By including fire sprinklers throughout, the code will allow for the rating reduction of the crawl space contained furnace room. Our local home builders find that this cost alone is typically more than the included fire sprinkler system in the same home, approximately $3,600 in value. Homes on basements. By including fire sprinklers throughout, the code will allow for the reduction, elimination in emergency egress windows located in bedrooms. We typically see a cost impact of about $700 a window. Developments. Reduced street widths, decreased water main infrastructure, increased hydrant spacing and increased setbacks, elimination of additional access points, effectively more units for construction in the same amount of space without having to sacrifice comfort or affordability. Typical cost saving to a developer is approximately $7,000 per lot. And that's right from the city of Sheridan.
Anybody else want to add anything?
I would. And I, I don't know if you'd want to add whatever. You are correct. I opened up the door and I said that we can revisit this. I did not expect that it would be four months later. I thought we were going to have a couple of years for this. I'll be honest. DeBorey asked why he was surprised it was on the agenda because nobody, the council asked for this. I will be blunt. My personal opinion, I think we need to vote this down tonight because the bottom line is that this was a political manipulation on us as a council. We didn't ask for this. We wanted time to review and look over stuff and now it's been thrown back in our lap. And I would just ask the council to vote it down so that we can research it. I'm sorry, I understand. I don't necessarily disagree with it, but there are still other questions that we didn't get time to look at. Captain France said that if you do that, it's going to affect your financing. I mean, there's other things to this that's bigger than this. And the bottom line is, we didn't ask for this to be on the agenda. As a council, we did not ask for this. We asked for some time to do some research. I wanted to call other companies than just this one. I'll be blunt. You told us that this was the cheapest bid that you could find. So what's the most expensive? I keep hearing $6,000 to install it, but I know other people that have bids done for over $10,000 here in Rawlins. So there's clearly a lot of this that is not that organized and put together. I get it, man, I'm not, I'm not saying it's not the same. I just don't like being manipulated into a decision.
Honorable Mayor.
And I'm not saying that you are or that this was. I'm saying that the fact that this was put on the agenda, I consider a manipulation against this council. And I will vote it down for that.
I take exception to that. We did not have side-by-side demonstrations. That was a big part of this. That was part of why this came back. We had the opportunity to get the resource, have the weather to do those demonstrations. So I couldn't do that when this came around in January of 2018. And I sincerely take exception to the fact that it's insinuated that I am manipulating this council because that is not the truth. I did not go...
Chief, I am not you. I am not putting this on you. Let me be very, very clear. This is not on you. You do not have the power to put this on the agenda.
Actually, I did.
Well, okay, I take that back, but again, I, we as a council did not ask for this. So that is to me a manipulation because it got put on here without us being asked. I don't want to fight about this. We don't need to go into this. This is my opinion.
I appreciate that.
People didn't ask for it. It looks to the general population, this failed, it came back right at Thanksgiving time. If I was in the public, I would look at this as a fast one that the city council was trying to pull. And that is not at all what I think it's trying to...
Well, so if it's not the chief, I take exception to it that we're politically manipulating you. It hasn't been four months, it's been longer than that. And none of...
It was this year.
It was January.
And we asked for a couple of years...
Can I finish, Mayor? Go ahead and finish, please.
I'm sorry, go ahead, I apologize.
Unre- Mayor, Councilmember Durst. We put things on the agenda and the mayor approves those things to be brought up to the council. So if you don't want something brought forward to you, talk to the mayor about it. Don't chastise my fire chief, don't accuse him of things like that. Don't accuse me of that unless you have proof to back that up. Person that approves that agenda is that man right there, not me, not him, not him. So I do take exception to that. Extreme exception to that. I don't like it. You asked, and you challenged this man to bring some facts to you on this subject. We had a side-by-side demonstration summer fest with the general public. I think the mayor was there at State Fire Department. So we showed the public at one of the largest events that we have in the summer downtown. And again, we brought this burn, side-by-side demonstration, to you folks in a work session just for you to see this, to educate you to this subject. I applaud these men and women of this city for being passionate enough about their careers, to care enough about this community, to follow up and bring the answers that you asked for. And then to be stood here tonight and be accused of politically maneuvering in this body is an insult. Be ashamed of yourself. Thank you.
And to clarify, I did approve that to come back on the agenda. Allow them to give us more information because I felt the first time we didn't have enough and now we've gotten more, maybe make a more informed decision or not.
Okay, well then I will put much of that on you for this as well.
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion on the floor.
And I would this time like to amend that motion so that we postpone this second reading until the next or next meeting on the 17th, I believe, in December. This is a seven-member board and there's a lot of, this is a hard topic. And I understand that. So I would make, I would entertain a motion to postpone it till December 17th.
So you'd like to change your motion to postpone it till December 17th?
A motion to amend, overrides the main motion. So I can amend it and I get a second, we can vote on the amendment.
I'll get the second, please.
A second.
Is that how we do that, Amy?
That's how you do it.
Because you're postponing, you're not tailing it, you're postponing it...
Postponing it till December 17th for the second reading.
It's about that we're going to have all of our members.
Hopefully we have all our members of the council here.
So the motion you're reading is to approve it, but I will make the minutes reflect the postponement to the December 17th meeting.
That's correct.
So wait a minute. You're saying that we're going to vote on something that doesn't say what it's supposed to?
Do you want me to...
I'm...
No.
Okay, I can stand. What change, do we close this out?
Yeah, sure, we can change, so we do it.
Okay, refresh, please.
So refresh, oh. Yeah, mine's not a, it still has the original.
Mine too.
First reading?
Ooh, I don't think so.
Yes, your's reading.
First reading?
So Mayor, would you want me to do a verbal vote?
We can do that.
Okay, so I'm going to open the voting with Councilmember Martinez making the motion to amend, postpone the rating of second ordinance to December 17th, 2019.
Right, yes.
Espinoza?
Yes.
Mayor Yackelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Durst?
Yes.
Wells?
Yes.
Thank you, Martha. Now we'll move on down to new business. Thank you, John. Thank you, Lou. To approval of the payroll? Councilmember Durst?
I move to approve November 10, 2019 to November 23, 2019 payroll register for $226,107.66.
So I could bet? We have a first and a second. Any questions in regards to that motion on payroll? If not, Sherry, would you open online voting, please?
I'm sorry, who's the first?
Durst.
Yep.
Martinez. Yes, yeah. We'll get it right.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes. It didn't show up.
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with five days.
All right, thank you, Sherry. Move down to item B, accounts payable. Councilwoman Wells?
I move to approve the accounts payable register for the period of November 15, 2009 to November 26, 2019. Did I say 2009? 2019 on both. In the amount of $708,286.79.
Second. We have a first and a second. Any questions in regards to approval of accounts payable? Sherry, would you open online voting, please?
When? I'm praying as to submission for the visitors' council grant.
Next. You're on C.
That's just what popped up, like I...
So that was my guess.
I'm only getting a visitors' grant thing here. I vote yes, though.
Nope, that's the payroll one that popped up.
I know, but I did accounts payable when you did payroll.
Okay.
Off one, that makes sense.
Okay. Oh, we should, we should be okay with that, I might vote, cause we all vote.
Yeah, you're either right.
Councilmember Espinoza?
Yes.
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with five days.
Okay. Now we'll move it down to item C, resolution of the Carvin County Visitors Council Grant for the two thousand twenty silver bullet shooting tournament.
Honorable Mayor and Council, this is my eleventh time asking you for permission to pursue these grants for the shooting tournament and the racquetball tournament. This is the shooting tournament's thirtieth year. That means it started two years after the, the, the center opened, and I was employed that year as a part, permanent part-time, so it didn't count. So, so it's kind of exciting to have this tournament again this year. Usually, we have to limit it now to about forty-five shooters, and not more than fifty guns, that's what they call it. Yeah, like, shooter can have two guns, okay? Yes. It's very important to our community, too, because it brings in a lot of people from out of town to see our facility, and our facility is one of the best because we have that automatic system. So I would really, really appreciate this thousand dollars. They help us a lot with, um, the prizes, the advertising, and the token T-shirt, and that has become very famous throughout the tournament years. So this is a great help to us.
Councilwoman Martinez?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the resolution authorizing submission for the Carvin County Visitors Council Grant, application amount of one thousand for advertising and prizes for the twenty-eighth annual silver bullet shooting tournament. February the twenty-second and twenty-third.
Councilwoman Durst? Yeah, we have a first and a second. Any questions for Patty Hayes?
Is it gonna be fun?
It's always fun.
All right, if there's no questions, Sherry would you open online voting?
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with five days.
Thank you very much.
You're sure welcome. Now we'll move on down to the resolution, Carvin County Visitors Council Grant for the two thousand twenty Pepsi Premier Racquetball Tournament.
This is in its twenty-ninth year, okay? It was fifty years. We were a little poor that year and the weather was really bad and the shooter said, we'll come, and they came in April. And the racquetball people, people said, where's the shooters? And the shooter said, where's the racquetball people? That's the last time we ever separated them, because they come to this to see each other. We have a joint party on Saturday night, you're more than welcome to come, it's really fun. We, um, the racquetball, actually, I just want you to know that I played in it for three years. I know. I was, I was classed like way C. And it was really fun, and it still is fun. We get a lot of professional open players up here because we're well-known in the circuit, we place ourselves in the circuit, and we welcome all the travelers. It helps us as a city, we try and get them out, but they don't usually leave the rec center. They usually lay on the floor, that's why we eat on the other side of town. So at least they can drive through town on the way through. But the community hosts these tournaments very well, and I know that it's, it's very fun for staff to do this, so I would appreciate moving forward with this also.
Councilwoman Wells?
I move to approve a resolution authorizing submission of the Carvin County Visitors Council Grant application in the amount of a thousand dollars for advertising and prizes for the Pepsi Premier Racquetball Tournament on February twenty-second and twenty-third, two thousand twenty.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any questions for Patty? Okay. Sherry, would you open online, online voting, please?
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with five days.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Patty. Now we'll move on down to item E, the reject of a bid at the Recreation Center Fire Panel Upgrade.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, I'm asking you guys to reject the bid for the fire alarm panel at the rec center due to the one bid that we did receive did not provide a bid bond. I wish I didn't have to do that, just for the record. But, um, I guess a little bit of background, I do wanna let you guys know, initially, um, during the budget process, we had proposed to replace the fire alarm at City Hall. Um, the State Fire Marshal's Office did an inspection at the rec center, and at that time, it was identified that that system had not been inspected or tested. So we did that, and during that inspection, it was identified that panel was having a lot of issues. Um, it keeps kicking itself into batteries, like override it, I'm not very good at all that technical stuff. So anyway, we kind of redid things and that became a higher priority than the one at City Hall that is functioning. Um, it's just getting outdated and older. So I am going to put this out to bid again. Um, I'll reach out if you guys, whatever action you take tonight, and let that company know, and try to reach out to some others as well so that we can hopefully continue to get this project done. If you have any questions, let me know.
Can we get a motion? Councilman, um, Durst? Who you are from, eh?
Sir Mayor, I move to reject the bid and rebid the project for the rec center.
Fire panel.
Fire panel.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Is there any questions for Danielle in regards to this? Sherry, would you open up?
Just a follow-up on this, so I see that it's like clearly very expensive. Is that just gonna get moved into the budget process to get a, like an up, it looks like it needs, needs a new one?
So we had, we had money to replace the one at City Hall, that was before we were notified that the one at the rec center was also at a more critical level. So what we were proposing to do, if we would have had the bid bond, we would've said, hey, we wanna allocate the money that was for this system for the rec center this year because it's a higher priority, and then we'd be rebudgeting this one next year.
Oh, okay, okay. So if we were just redoing which building, basically?
Basically, just because of the priority level that comes with it.
So it's not, the money isn't really an issue. Per se, it's budgeted, it was just a different building.
Yeah, correct, it would be that the money was allocated and budgeted for a alarm panel upgrade in a building. However, this one's more critical, so yes.
All right, okay.
I have a question too, Danielle.
Yes.
Uh, did they happen to mention why they didn't do a bid bond? Or they just didn't do it?
They just did not do one.
And it wasn't in requirements?
It was, yes. It was spelled out in the, um, notice for bid, and then they had a, um, con, a draft contract with that bid. Uh, and the general provisions, correct? I know I'm forgetting something. All of that was provided to them.
Okay.
Thank you, I see.
Thank you, Danielle.
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with five days.
All right, thank you. Now we'll move on down to item F, to approve Wyoming Community Gas, two thousand nineteen, designated projects, I can't even speak, sorry. Councilman, Espinoza?
I'd like to make a motion to postpone it till we get the other two council members here on, on this.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a first and a second to postpone that to December seventeenth. Open to have a full quorum.
I only just have one quick question, is there any, are we against any lines or timelines on that, that that would be a problem?
The documentation presented to you in board docs, they would like a decision no later than December thirty-first.
Okay.
We'll definitely be making a decision on the seventeenth. Any other questions? If not, then when you get time.
I'm sorry, who's second?
I did.
Uh, Lewis?
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with five days.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll move on down to item G, to approve local government liability pool, official ballot for board vacancies.
Honorable Mayor and Council, as a member of, uh, Wyoming's local governmental liability pool, we are, we are paid members or contributing members, and so our body has a right to vote for the people that represent you uh, on that board at a state level. And I believe, uh, the official ballot was attached here, so there was an at-large position. There's two board positions will be vacated on January first, two thousand twenty. Uh, one is for the at-large position and one for the county commissioner position. Both positions are three-year terms. Uh, in accordance with local governmental liability rules and regulations, chapter two, section one, board members shall be elected from the participating local government entities. Each participating entity shall be allowed one vote for each open position. Uh, the majority of the votes received by the executive director will constitute a successful elective. Um, and so you have that ballot there, and there was a recommendation of a motion there if you choose to, um, to do that, and I would stand for any questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman DeBary.
I don't have any problem doing this. My problem is, I don't know these people. I don't know which one's doing a better job for us, or we don't have enough information. Now Linda is involved with it, so again, that's one of these subjects that, uh, if, if it's, we have to do it tonight?
No, we do, we do have time on this, we brought you the, I think we initially brought the ballot, um, prior meeting, but, uh, we do have until, uh, January, yeah, or January first, two thousand twenty, I believe.
So this is ballots are due no later than December thirty-first, the five days.
Okay, there you go, cause it talks about on January first, so.
Councilman Martinez?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to, um, make a motion that we postpone this again December seventeenth so that Councilman Smith could come in and visit with us, and she has sat on that board and would be able to give us some information on these people. I don't know who they are.
I, I agree. We have a second? We have a first and a second to postpone this to the December seventeenth council meeting to allow Linda Smith to maybe give us some insight on these members. All right, we're past my bedtime, we're good. We went over the hump, we're here till midnight now.
Got past the witching hour.
Stop that, Kelly.
I've been a commissioner since all morning, too. You elected officials to wear me out?
We're wearing ourselves out.
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with five days.
Okay, now we'll move on down to approve the lease agreement for purchase of a rotary snowblower.
Honorable Mayor and Council, this is the piece of equipment we talked briefly about at the last meeting, in the effort to try to work it out, and I'll give you a prime example today. Uh, and, and it's a good opportunity to put a plug in for this, uh, Harshman Street north of the rec center to west of the higher education center is closed tonight. It'll be closed for most of the morning. We were in the process of going through our regular process, removing the snow and the medians on Cedar Street. Uh, the street became impassable, the school district asked us to go take a look at it. Uh, we started plowing it out, so we pulled our resources up there, and we made one pass with a, a grader, and the snow was as high as the cab of the grader, and before we get back to the other end and start cleaning up, it was drifting back in. Having this piece of equipment is a prime example for that. I sent a grader operator, a gentleman that runs the Pac-Man machine, and three dump trucks up there to clean less than a quarter mile of street. I had this blower attached to a loader, I could send one man up there. It could make a couple of passes, the snow would be blown over into the field, onto our, onto our baseball fields, and we'd move on with life. So, uh, we, we know it's gonna be an effective tool with anything we wanna try. Uh, a used piece first, if it's successful and we like it, we'll probably be coming back and asking you in the budgetary process to look at doing this again. We, uh, found a used one, uh, and, and as we were looking, as we were debating, and that's why we had the brief conversation about the way the statute was written. It's, it's always logistically hard to write a bid spec for a used piece of equipment. I mean, you can get generic and say less than a thousand hours. Well, then if somebody has a, and a, a machine that is a thousand and one hours, it doesn't meet your bid spec, and then you reject it. So we, staff struggled with trying to come up with a...